We're ready. Queen's wave. The baby was born. Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the May 8, 2019, the Neshoba Regional School Committee Regular Meeting. Calling the meeting order at 6:00. Do we have any citizens' comments? That's our first order, agenda item? Nope. School Committee Chair update. I just have a couple, and then I have something more to add where it makes sense for agenda items for next meeting. First of all, I want to thank Lynn Coletti. This is her final school committee meeting. Lynn has served for 12 years on the school committee successively. So she's seen it come and go, and ups and downs, and Lynn, just want you to know that I personally truly appreciate having worked with you so closely over the past three or four years.
Yeah, you're tough.
So I'm tough.[67.18][67.18](Laughter). And Susan Riordan is not here. We knew she wasn't going to be able to make it, so I just want to also thank Susan for her three years on the school committee and leading the charge on the policy review manual, which is a massive undertaking.
You guys need to take care of her.
Yeah.
You'll be doing it.
Yeah. So, and then, you know, I just have some, and I swear, see how short it is? A couple things for each of the school committees. So, thank you all for everything that you've done over this past year and the previous few. I just have three things I want to ask you to remember, and when I'm gone, those may be gone too. That's okay. But I want you to think about three things. Advocate, be brave, and then take good care of our district. Your primary responsibility is to students, but also to the parents, the staff, and our residents. I think this committee does a really good job of listening. It wasn't always like that, but it really is like that, and that's been an evolution. Do your research, understand the facts, understand the data, and then look outside the numbers and look at the soft facts. Because the soft facts sometimes will have more of an impact than the hard numbers. And then make your decision. The second thing is to be brave. Be brave enough to do the right thing even when it's not comfortable. You aren't alone. You move as a unit. That's one of the hardest things to get to know when you join a committee, a public body like this. No one of us makes a decision, not the chair, not the vice chair, not any one of us sitting in the seat. You move as a unit. So when you have your discussions and you debate those topics, and sometimes it can get heated, and that's okay, as long as it's respectful. But then, once that vote is taken, whether you voted yea or nay, whether you abstained, whether you were even in the meeting, that vote is what you move forward with as a committee. And then, take good care of this district. I have a lot of passion for these kids, for the teachers, for the administration, and for all of you. It's not easy. It's a really tough job. I don't know that people realize how tough it is until they join and they realize, oh my gosh, I can't do the things that I want to do, the way that I wanted to do it when I came in and I had all this, you know, energy. But allow yourself to become compassionate and passionate about the work. And when things get really intense, because you know that they do, whether there's an issue that's being debated that the community is concerned about, or you have outside forces that are being debated, or whatever it is, and you realize, I'm not sure this is really what I should be doing. Should I take a step back and reevaluate? At that point, go to the schools and go look at those kids. And go to a game that your kid's not playing at. Or go watch, you know, the kids singing and your kid isn't there. Just go watch the kids. I swear to you, everything just melts away, and all of a sudden, it's like, okay, I can go back and I could do this. So you have my complete and full support. If any one of you, or all of you, any of you needs anything, I'm there for you. You just let me know, and as soon as Bolton can add its third rep, I'll be coming back.[283.19][283.19](Laughter). All right, moving on.
Can I interrupt, please?
Yeah.
Chairman Moscow. I know that we're going to do another bit of a recognition here at the 6:25 mark, but we do have a special guest that's just come in, and I'd like to welcome Kate Hogan. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. This is a real pleasure to have you tonight, and I know that she has something special for the both Lynn and Lorraine. Great. So we'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
No, no, I'm so glad to be here. Hey, everybody, thanks for all the work that you do. So well appreciated, I want you to know that. But I'm here tonight from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the House of Representatives because I like it to be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Lorraine Romasco in recognition of your dedicated service and leadership to the Neshoba Regional School Committee from 2013 to 2019 for the town of Bolton. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses a hope for future good fortune given this the 8th day of May 2019. And Lorraine, you are such a good friend and such a good leader, and I wish you all the best in all your future endeavors. Congratulations on all that you've done.[366.12][366.12](Applause).
Oh, wait a minute.
Oh, you can get that?
Right here?
Oh, yes.
Oh, wait a minute.
Lynn Coletti, in recognition of your dedicated service and commitment to the Neshoba Regional School Committee from 2007 to 2019 for the town of Stowe, the entire membership of the House of Representatives offers its best wishes and expresses a hope for future good fortune in all your endeavors given this the 8th day of May 2019. Congratulations on all that you've done, all that you've accomplished, and your dedication to this, the Neshoba Regional School Committee. Congratulations.[419.12][419.12](Applause).
Open it. Open it.
It's like a card.[423.74][423.74](Laughter). No, but you're not looking at it.
I'm actually looking at it.[429.31][429.31](Laughter).
Thank you so much.
Oh, of course.
There we go. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.[438.31][438.31](Applause).
Oh, Karen. And we'll still do that.
Alita.
Thank you, everybody. I don't want to take too much.
Thank you. Okay, move on quickly.
No, not yet. So we also have, before you move on, yeah, for Lynn first, I'm going to ask Kathy to say a word or two, and we're actually going to take this out of order, Chairman Romasco, just so that we can wrap it all up. Kathy, we're going to hand it over to you. Actually, that's, is that, I have the wrong order, don't I?
Uh-oh.
Is this, that, who's, you're going to do, I'm sorry, you're going to do Lynn, aren't you?
No.
Lorraine? Okay. Sorry, my apologies.
So is this the one, the right gift?
That's Lynn's gift, yeah, so let me do that one.
Okay, nice.
Sorry, sorry, Lynn. My apologies for that. Thank you. Lynn, I wanted to say a couple of words here, too, and I've written something here that I'm going to say a couple of words. I want to thank you for your services in the Neshoba Regional School District, again, for a total of four terms. That's unbelievable. 12 years. That's a huge amount of time. This represents a tremendous amount of time and meetings away from your family and in service to our district. Thank you for asking the challenging questions because you're infamous for, we know what to expect from you. What we know to expect is that we can't anticipate what it is that you're going to ask. So you tend to keep us on our toes a lot, and that's a good thing, and we've appreciated that. So thank you for asking the challenging questions and ensuring that we have always thought through alternatives, because that's where you always point us. Thank you for being a terrific team player and taking notes when no one else wanted to take notes. You did it. Thank you for your countless efforts with the Hail Building process and all that you did with that, and the follow-up thereafter. And thank you for all of the work that you did with all of the subcommittees. We wish you the very best. So on behalf of the schools, the wonderful process you do.[590.12][590.12](Applause). And Lorraine.
Sorry.
That's okay.
It's a boat.
Is it a boat?
It's a box.
No, it's not a boat.
It is a boat.
It's not a boat.
It's a box.
So when I came on the school committee four years ago, I was excited, and then I became very concerned early on because it seemed like a rudderless ship. Coming from a background in education, I was used to structure, vision, mission, goals, evaluating what works, what doesn't work, and I just felt like I was floating in the ether. And then I met Lorraine.
Oh, great.[628.62][628.62](Laughter).
I think that's a positive.
Oh, okay.
No, it's a good thing. Because it was clear in the conversations that we had, but not just the conversations, but in terms of walking the talk, having a vision, modeling leadership, that are the very things that you said. You're an advocate, first and foremost, for children, for excellence in education, for the pride and integrity of this district. Every time, with no questions asked, you were there for us and the district and the kids. Talk about being brave. I remember a couple of times when I thought, oh my God, I don't know how, you know, she can continue to take it, but you did and came back stronger. And the things, the changes, the structures, the relationships, all about working on behalf of kids, but also looking at how we can make this sustainable. It wasn't about what Lorraine Romasco wanted, it was about what is going to work? How are we going to create a school committee that can sustain itself, maintain the high standards, but overall, always, always, always act in the best interest of kids? To me, you seem tireless, but I know that a lot of time, effort, blood, sweat, and tears went into this job, and I am so grateful to have been part of this committee, to work with you in this transformation, and we're really going to miss your leadership. So if that position ever does open up in Bolton, I will sign the position, the position as somebody who will.[738.12][738.12](Laughter). So thank you so much. I cannot thank you enough.
Thank you.
And I just want, I want to make a quick, I've got a couple of super quick comments. This is going to be super quick, I promise. I've already spoken with you off-camera about the, how important I think the work was that you've done within our district and the level of impact that you've had, certainly with our administrative team and the district at large, but I do have a couple of thoughts that I want to express. Thank you for your years of dedication and the service to our district and the children that we serve. You have always had the goal of keeping children at the forefront of our decision-making processes and all that we do within the district, and you even alluded to that tonight, and we didn't even connect about this.
No.
Thank you for your leadership, for bringing an incredible sense of structure to our work around the school committee table. You strategically planned and thoughtfully implemented a number of new initiatives to support the work that our school committee does, and you've always ensured that it's tied in with the work that we do within our buildings. You have represented us well on the state stage, participated in panel discussions and presentations at our annual conference. You've served as a role model to up-and-coming school committee members. You have never been afraid of the hard work that goes with this role or putting in countless hours, and you've been an outstanding partner and leader to work with, and we will continue to benefit from your efforts long after you have loved this role. Thank you for all that you have done to support our district.
You're welcome. Thank you so much for that.[829.12][829.12](Applause).
I do want to also mention Susan's not here tonight, and we knew that.
Okay, got it.
Susan's not here this evening, but I, and I've spoken with her offline, too, but I also wanted to make a public statement. I sent her an email, and I'm just going to read parts. Obviously, I won't read the entire email, but I just wanted to read parts of it because I agree with Lynn, of course, and one thing that we're always going to remember is, quote Susan, is the work of policies, because it was such an enormous undertaking and such a commitment. So I'll just read snippets of the email that I had sent to her. I said, "I wanted to send along a personal note of thanks to you. I appreciated your consistent sense of calm and professionalism." If there's one thing we'll always remember both Susan, it was that calm, grounded approach to everything she did. "You brought a grounded and common-sense approach to everything that you did, and above all else, you had that special smile that was a constant. Thank you for your additional efforts regarding the policy work. That was an enormous amount of work and quite the undertaking, and again, you handled it all so well. Your work was focused with great attention to detail, and that was precisely what we needed. Thank you, Susan, for all that you did and not hesitating to speak up exactly when you should have. I honestly felt so fortunate to have you at our table." Thank you, thank you, thank you. So I just wanted to, I know that she's not here, and I know that her time is done, but I wanted to make sure that we acknowledged. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chairman Romasco, and this would be for Colin.
Colin.
It's your turn.
So I have to admit, I know Colin's family. And I met Colin when you were younger, Andrea.
Probably about six years ago.
Yeah, six years ago. So, the, you know, Colin's approach to things is methodical, very calm. You're going to make, if you ever go into business, you're going to make it amazing.
That's, yeah, that's my minor.
You're going to, you're going to be amazing at it. He thinks through things, and then he speaks, right? And to have that level of maturity at your age, I know I sound like an old lady, but is a really wonderful thing. Having you at the table has been good, and I'll tell you why. Because, you know, there, this role is that you're filling. Sometimes we've had folks come in and they, they talk a lot, and they get involved in votes, which they're not supposed to, which is okay, because everybody learns, right? Sometimes we have the kids come in and they don't say anything. But you would add color, you would answer our questions, and your responses were always well thought through and on point. So just want to wish you the very, very best in what you're doing. Make, want to, if you're okay with it, share with us where you're going after graduation.
Yeah, I'm going to be doing mechanical engineering at UMass Lowell, and then minoring, as I said, in business.
So we wish you a blast.[1016.62][1016.62](Applause). Take care of your summertime work. Okay. All right.
Now we can get off to your agenda.
Yeah, you can. Okay.
We need some help.
Yeah. Oh, Colin, do you have an update?
Of course I do.[1038.12][1038.12](Laughter).
Thank you for that.
The boys' lacrosse team is doing well this season with an 8-3 record, pulling out a win against Teens Row yesterday. They look to face North Middlesex tomorrow at the high school at 6:00. The girls' team is 5-5 defending St. Bernard's. Last week, they beat them 14-7, and they will face Shepherd Hill tomorrow afternoon. The boys' baseball team is currently 6-2. They're playing a game right now, actually. I watched a little bit as I was walking back from practice. They're winning against Wachusett. The softball team is doing well with a 4-3 record that they hope to improve tomorrow against Holy Name. The girls' and boys' tennis teams will both be facing Shepherd Hill tomorrow, and both track teams are doing well, and they will be facing Grand Dumbstool tomorrow for the arts. The Neshoba bands will be performing this Friday for their spring pops concerts in the auditorium at 7:00 p.m. The choir pop, choir pops concert will be held a week from then, next Friday, May 17th. These will be the final high school performances of the year, and they will be good, so don't miss out. Neshoba had a student-run jazz group perform at a competition last Saturday, and they took home a silver medal. It was actually a few of my friends, it's run by one of my friends, Max Mitchell, and he got a bunch, and a few of the kids from the jazz band, and they do all the music themselves, they practice on their own.
Wow.
Mr. McCarthy just set up their place in the competition, so they did everything, and they ended up with a silver. So for events, AP tests have been underway for the past week or so, and they will continue on until the end of next week. I'm not looking forward to those. The seniors have just over two full weeks until they are out next, two Fridays from now, the 24th. And prom is coming up for the juniors next Saturday, May 18th. It will be held at Mechanics Hall in Worcester, and the after-prom will be held at Neshoba with the theme of enchanted. And that is all I have for.
Colin, does anybody have any questions for Colin?
No.
And if not, Colin, would you like to introduce Ibi?
Sure.
So I'm taking my place from now on. Unfortunately, I have practices pretty much every Wednesday from 5:00 to 7:00. So I'm taking my place is Ibi Sonya.
Come on up, Ibi.
Yeah, we'll have to get a chair there for the chair. We've got one for you.
There you go.
Yeah, so I'm Ibi Sonya. The Sonya family has actually been going to Neshoba for a very long time. My dad went to Neshoba, my uncle taught there. I'm currently a junior, and I'm from Lancaster. I'm also varsity athlete. I play volleyball in the fall, but my priorities usually lie with music. I'm in band, I'm a drum major. I used to do choir, but that was a big commitment, and I do a lot of music outside of school as well. I've been in all of the school musicals as featured dancers and small roles and stuff like that. So, yeah, I just like to be involved in anything that I possibly can at school all around. So I enjoy myself.
So when you come to school committee meetings, I would really encourage you to raise your hand to be recognized and add perspective from the student population. It's really important that the school committee, we don't, we're not there every day, so if you can add value during the time that the topic is being discussed, have the chair at the time, whoever that is, recognize you. Let the school committee know what's going on, because they want to know. Everything that happens here impacts you, and so they need that feedback. But welcome.
Thank you.
We're excited to have you. And Colin, we wish you the very best. I would agree with Chairman Romasco. You were awesome this year, so thank you very, very much. Keep in touch, let us know how it goes.
I will, definitely.
Thank you. And I'd be welcome aboard. Thanks for coming tonight, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Colin.
All right. Next order of business is the superintendent's report.
Absolutely. I'll go through this as quickly as I can. Dr. McGuire will help out along the way, too. First of all, we want to say a special thank you to our towns, because our annual town meetings are now finished, it's another year in the books, so that was really exciting. All of the NRSD articles were approved Monday and Tuesday evening in terms of things, all of the things that we put forward have been passed between all of the three communities. A note as well, a thanks to Pat Maroni and Rob Frieswick for attending the Stowe meeting. Michelle Cody represented NRSD in Lancaster, and Dr. McGuire jointly attended the Bolton meeting with myself. Thank you to our town administrators for continuing to work so collaboratively back and forth. I felt it was really, again, another very successful year in terms of collaborating through that budget process and just really appreciate everything that our town administrators bring to this work. I thought it was a great evening for the school district. I'm really, really proud of everything that pulled together. We are so appreciative of the continued support of our three communities. You know, I was thinking, as I was driving in tonight, it's just such a pleasure to work in the Neshoba Regional School District, and there isn't a day that I am not proud to be a part of this district and a leader in this district. It's just an amazing school district, and I felt that Monday night at those town meetings was just another example of why this is a great district. So a special thank you to everyone. The second item here is a year-end wrap-up for the committee or various committees that I serve on, like, such as the Astabat Valley Collaborative. We've had our last meeting for the year. Worcester County Superintendent's Roundtable, had our final meeting with that. So the committees are starting to wrap up, and I can't believe, as Colin said, there's two more weeks, and I'm thinking, really? Where did this year go to? It just goes so quickly. So a special thank you to everyone involved in those committees. Neshoba Regional High School, I just want to mention for the third item, this was really exciting. This is one of those things that you don't see coming, and you're always cautious as you put it forward, but we, because we've ranked so high this year. Neshoba Regional High School was ranked number 17 in the state for high school rankings according to U.S. News and World Report, and number 567 nationwide. The U.S. News Best High School Rankings include data from more than 23,000 public high schools in 50 states and the District of Columbia. More than 17,000 schools were ranked on factors based on their performance, on state assessments, and how well they prepare students for beyond high school, including college and career readiness, math reading proficiency, graduation rates, college curriculum breadth, and undeserved student performance. And in 2018, last year, we were ranked at number 30. So this is a very good feeling, and, you know, it, I appreciate Paul D. Minico, Principal Paul D. Minico, saying this morning as we were talking, around the principal's table. We never lose sight of the fact that our high school does it as well, because not only does it do a great job at that level, but to feed our schools, that feed, that build those children to get to where they are. So this is really, really special for us. So you never know, like, say, you're always cautious, because you never know what next year is going to bring, but right now, this is a very good feeling, and I think we really need to celebrate the high school with this kind of ranking. It's amazing. Dr. McGuire, turn it over to you for the next two items.
Next item is the Digital Safety Night. So the Teaching and Learning Department, as well as our gentleman down working as ITS, Technology Specialists, are putting together a Digital Safety Night that will take place on Tuesday, May 28th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the Florence Sawyer Cafeteria. It's kind of a part two to the one we held this fall that was on kind of the one-to-one Chromebook rollout in our digital, digital plan, digital literacy plan. This session will focus on digital safety, including best practices in an online environment, one's digital footprint, and provide parents with several resources as partners in educating our students on the importance of a safe online presence. The session will be informative, it'll also be interactive, and provide participants with an opportunity to learn about the district's focus for online safety and promoting active citizenship in a digital environment. It'll hopefully then set the ground for a series that we hope to offer next year in offering more workshops for parents for our digital literacy and our digital learning plan. The next piece is on district accountability data 2019. If you'll remember, this fall, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education rolled out new accountability data that we rolled out to you folks in the fall, and those results for our district were very good. Myself and our Teaching and Learning Department attended a workshop on Monday so that we could get further information, as well as offer feedback on that accountability data for, for school districts. There have been some recommendations for changes. There is open comment available for people to make online until the end of this month, and then they will move forward with any changes or recommendations. That accountability data will be available in early fall, and once again, we will report out on it and report out on any changes that are coming down with our accountability.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Alita to bring up some pictures. We recently had the Neshoba Children's Fair, and I'm going to turn it over in a minute here to Elaine, who's going to make a comment or two with regards, because she was in attendance there. This year, the Neshoba Children's Fair was a huge success. The 21st, 21st Neshoba Children's Fair was out on Saturday, May 4th. We want to make sure that we thank the outstanding staff who did such a great job coordinating the various vendors and exhibits, including Tom Poole's Nutrition Station focused on healthy nutritional options. Families loved the hot dogs, and did you see what they were served in? The little Frisbees, the Neshoba Frisbees? So much cuteness.[1698.62][1698.62](Laughter). It really just was. It was awesome. And we just want to thank everyone who participated and attended, if there was something there for absolutely everyone. So Elaine, I don't know if you've got a comment or two that you'd like to make.
Sure. I think this is my third year attending the Children's Fair, because I have little ones, and the first time I went, I didn't have my second child yet, so. It's always just a lot of fun, and there's so many activities for the kids to do. We could spend hours there. Lots of different arts and crafts and projects and things that they can work on, and my favorite part is that it keeps the kids busy while the parents can visit the different booths and talk to the people about services or preschools that are around, and all the different informational stations that were there. So that was great. I was going to mention the Frisbees as well, because I thought that was just, it was so creative.
Such a cool idea.
We had an entire lunch of hamburgers and hot dogs, and then all of a sudden, I was like, what is this?[1751.12][1751.12](Laughter). And it's awesome for reducing waste as well, like, that's something that you take home.
That's exactly right, yeah.
And also, I wanted to mention that Rina Rego, the Director of Extended Learning, brought her dog, who's either a therapy dog or a service dog, I'm not sure what the actual um, who's either a therapy dog or a service dog, I'm not sure what the actual classification is, but that was a huge hit with kids and even with my kids, so.
Great day.
Yeah, it was just a lot of fun.
Awesome, thank you so much. Dr. McGuire, turn it back to you for Project Aces.
Last piece on Project Aces. Last week, um, the Center School Community participated in the Project Aces Program. The Project Aces Program, which stands for All Children Exercising Simultaneously, was created in nineteen eighty-nine as a method of motivating children to exercise. Um, it takes place on the first Wednesday in May as part of National Physical Fitness and Sports Month, along with National Physical Education Week. It has been labeled as the world's largest exercise class by the media. Uh, since nineteen eighty-nine, millions of children from all over the world exercised together to promote proper health and fitness habits. Uh, Superintendent Clancy and I had the, um,
Great honor.
Great honor and good fortune to go over and watch each grade level as well as the faculty. Assistant Principal Nealan is here, as well as Principal Mulkrune also were out there dancing. Uh, they put on a dance and entertained the entire Center community. So it also represented a lot of hard work to get all of these kids in motion at the same time, um, on part of the faculty as well as the students, it was a lot of fun.
I think one of my favorite parts, I mean, I love watching the kids, but, uh, that was probably my, probably my favorite part, but the Carrie Underwood and Ludacris appearance.
That's right.
Was the best. I mean, I couldn't believe the amount of energy that those two staff members brought to those roles. It was just so much fun and I was ever so jealous because our director facilities, Rob Frieswick, had the best view ever because there was a leak up on the roof and they were trying to find it and then they realized what was happening, so they just stood there and watched the entire, the entire thing unfold. And so he was texting me because I had my phone saying, okay, we got the best seats in the house. And I thought, yes, I could see it, I heard they were looking down, but what a great time. That was just so much fun, so special thanks to everybody at Center School, it was a great time. And that's it for our report.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Nope, moving on. All right, we flipped.
We did.
We flipped the old business with the, the new business with the old business. So I'm going to turn over the Minuteman Middle School Positions Vote Topic to Superintendent Clancy and then she'll send it back to me.
That's exactly right. So I'll ask Martina if you can come to the table and Joel, you are going to come up and Laura as well to make sure that you're here for any questions that the school committee members may have, um, as, as we take a look at the, moving forward. And I'd ask Alita to bring up that F A Q sheet, if you could please. As, as I reflected more on, um, on the movement that we were looking to try to, to make and signaling the fact that we were looking to terminate the, uh, the current agreement as it stands between Minuteman and Nishova Regional School District, I started doing a lot of thinking about, how can I quickly, in a, in a nice synoptic, put some information out there? So I just want to kind of go through, um, I, I just created a quick F A Q sheet. So this is kind of, uh, for most of us, this is going to be kind of some repetitive information, but I want to add one or two points as we go along. So the, a couple of folks have said to me, okay, well, um, what buildings are the Minuteman teachers in that, that are linked to this outreach program? There's one teacher in each of the NRSD's middle schools, so in essence, that's one per community. Is there a current contract in place? And I know that I'd referred last time to the fact that I had a contract, um, on my desk, which continues to be true. Um, what I didn't realize is that it wasn't signed, nor was it dated. So we went on a search, Alita went on a search to try to find one and we cannot find any contracts in place right now at all. So, um, I reached out to, to Dr. Baquillan and asked amongst a, a series of other things that I was looking for, does he have a copy of the current contract because we, we don't have one? So all we have is drafts. So, um, who pays for the teachers' salaries and benefits? I had mentioned this, um, last time, uh, Minuteman writes the checks. Uh, they, again, they are on Minuteman staff, um, payroll. Uh, the funds for these positions, though, come from the Minuteman assessments, um, into each of our three communities. So that's, that's where the funds, uh, come from to pay, but the checks themselves are actually from Minuteman. Are these teacher, uh, members part of the NRSD Teachers Union? No, they're not, they're part of the Minuteman, uh, y- union. Is there a separate principal who oversees these teachers? The answer is yes. His name is George Clement, he's based out of Minuteman. Um, so in essence, these teachers, although they work in our schools, they have their own principal that they respond to, um, that is not an NRSD principal. Uh, who hires these teachers? Uh, Minuteman hires, they have a responsibility for hiring the teachers because they, in essence, are running the check there as part of their union. So it, it continues to be, um, under Minuteman's control. So for example, uh, they, you have an outstanding teacher here right now, Joel, in, at Florence Sawyer, um, who we hate to see retire, but we know she's, she's thinking of doing, uh, a retirement. I believe she may already have actually sent her a retirement letter to us. So she's looking at retiring at the end of next year. So we would have, we, the blessing of having her for one more school year. However, if this relationship was to continue, Joel wouldn't have anything to do with the hiring of that position. That position would be hired by George Clement, who would, you know, and the Minuteman staff. So that's who's responsible for the hiring process. Do these teachers receive the same pay and benefits as NR, as NRSD staff do? No, these teachers are paid on, using the Minuteman contract, uh, which is a hi, a slightly higher paying contract. These teachers follow the same supervision and evaluation program as NRSD. Um, as a result, the teachers belonging to the Minuteman, they follow the process that's implemented there. So they don't follow this necessarily the same process that we do. So for example, um, you know, our, our staff works very hard and there's an administrative team that works in conjunction with our union, uh, that goes through and kind of organizes priorities or key elements that we focus on. And so as a district, we focus on those key elements. If you're not in that district, then you're being focused on with different elements and not necessarily the same elements that the teacher in the classroom beside you is. So it feels a little disjointed on that. Who pays for the supplies, hardware and software in this program? Um, I want to thank Don Lo for helping me with, with this little piece because I was under the assumption that the, the Minuteman was paying for the, the, and again, it was a false assumption, I, I admit that, that they were paying for the hardware and software and such. And in essence, again, that they write the checks for it, um, so that part certainly the truth. Uh, but the process for, for these items follows the same process as we understand it as the teachers' salaries and benefits for these positions. So the funds, again, are assessed through our assessment to the communities and then it, it flows in, I, my understanding is they put it into a revolving account and then they put the expenditures up against that revolving account. So salaries, benefits, hardware, software, equipment, supplies is already being paid for by our three communities, by Bolton, Lancaster and Stone, through the annual assessment. So for example, Monday night, you just voted on the, the Minuteman component that will involve this for the next school year. And so again, I just want to repeat the notion that even though we don't have a contract, I don't know if we have a contract in place, we, we just don't have one here. Um, but in the drafts, there's that notion of the one year. And you can understand sitting here why we need that one year because that just was approved Monday night for next school year. So, um, are there other schools that take part in this outreach program? There are five middle schools, I alluded to that before.
Excuse me for my misinformation.
Yes, thank you.
There were three, Fulton Lancaster and Stone.
Right.
Um, Boxborough and Acton, um, make up the RJ Grade Junior High in Acton.
Right.
And they stopped, the last year they participated was FY seventeen, so it's just the three.
Oh, my apologies, that's new information, I did not realize that. Thank you, thank you for pointing that out. Um, is NRSD looking to cut this program from the general, general curriculum that's taught to middle school students? No, we believe that the purpose of the program is educationally sound and offers tremendous benefits to our students. We will review the program, continue to, to offer the components of the curriculum that we feel are integral and make changes to adapt the program to meet specific NRSD goals and guidelines and tying it in with the District Improvement Plan and the School Improvement Plans, which I alluded to at the last meeting. Uh, will the current teachers be able to apply for the same positions, um, when they are advertised? Absolutely. Um, the current teachers will be able to make application for the positions should they choose to. Uh, one of the three teachers, as I said earlier, will be retiring, so that leaves two additional teachers. Um, but we also, we need to say this, we were running a regular search for the positions as we routinely do for all positions. Um, the current teachers, however, belong to and are under contract to Minuteman. So, in essence, what would happen is, uh, I'm not saying that this is probably what could or should happen, as soon as this term, this agreement is terminated, those teachers in essence would go, ship back to Minuteman because they are Minuteman's teachers, they are not NRSD teachers. So that was the fastest way that I could do a quick snapshot of this. So I'm happy to review, um, any of the presentation I gave last week. Again, you have a principal, um, our principals from our middle schools here, you have Principal Bates and, uh, Principal Friend. You also have Martina Kenyon here from our Teaching and Learning because she will ultimately be the overseer for the curriculum as it's being, uh, formed next year. And we had alluded to the fact that we are going to look to our members of our I T S department to help. We've, we've got a very strong I T S department, so we feel that that will be helpful as well. So maybe if I could ask the, the three administrators at the table to just offer a quick thought or two? Um, I'd really appreciate that, maybe, uh, Principal, Principal Bates, do you want to start with a, a comment and then?
Sure. Uh, uh, so let me first say that, uh, I'm in favor of the change. I think it's the right direction for the school district. I, I think that there is a tremendous opportunity for us to leverage the evolution of our science standards. I'm sure you're going to talk about this, but, um, you know, with, you know, with the practical applications of engineering and design that students experience through the middle school engineering program, I, I think there's nothing but upside for us.
Thanks. Uh, Principal Friend, comments?
I agree. Um, I think there is a lot of opportunity for us to continue to evolve the program. As we're able to have influence over it, our influence and our capacity to do so right now is limited. We're thinking about integration, that's what the middle school model is all about, with those interdisciplinary connections with STEAM, math, the science curriculum. And we're just, um, we're not able to explore those possibilities in our current models, so we're looking forward to that growing with this program.
Thank you. Martina, comments from you?
Uh, yeah, I just want to reiterate, um, what my colleagues have said and also, um, just, um, say or acknowledge the flexibility that this would provide us in terms of looking, um, as far as what we believe our students leaving the Shova really need and being able to support that in all aspects of the curriculum. Um, looking to integrate some of the digital literacy and computer science standards more, um, fully in, in this work. Um, and I think it's a great opportunity for us and it still will allow us to continue our value of engineering, um, as a field of study, so.
Right, thank you very much. So that's in a nutshell, unless you'd like me to, to offer more, I can certainly redo the presentation from last week.
Let's see if anybody has any questions. Kathy?
Um, I have some comments. Um, the impression I think that was left with some folks, um, after some of the things that were said the last time was that if we didn't, if a district didn't have the Minuteman program, then they were, were at a loss. Um, I had an opportunity to go back and look, visit the, the websites of the current ten-member towns for Minuteman and all of the middle schools have, and, um, I call them electives, I know they're not, um, related arts. Um, for, they have various names, Technology and Engineering, STEM, and their curriculums all are based on the, uh, Science and Technology and Engineering Curriculum Frameworks. And Martina, I don't remember, I know that Technology and Engineering was added after the original. Do you remember what year that was?
Um, I, I don't remember, I, I know it was part of the previous frameworks as well, two thousand and three or whatever.
This, the, the, I saw on Acton's website, they, they did have the Minuteman Middle School Engineering Curriculum, but it was dated two thousand and nine and believe it or not, that's like ten years ago. But it was no different than what the other, it, it, there was nothing unique about it. And then in looking at some of the other districts that are, and even the, there were several communities that opted out of Minuteman, looking at their curriculum guides, at their middle schools, same thing. Everybody has it on their own, homegrown and there is, there's, you know, there's a certification for teaching it and, and there are professional organizations for developing curriculum. And then the other thing I noticed was some variances, that people are adding robotics and, um, programming and things of that nature. And so I just want folks to know that where in the nineteen nineties, this, it was unique, you know? It, it was cool to have it because nobody else did, but in two thousand and nineteen, it is a part of every school's curriculum because of the curriculum frameworks. So, um, and then again, to reiterate, we were told there were five schools. There were up until FY seventeen and now there are just three.
All right, any questions? Elaine?
Um, so last week, actually I think Lynn used the term beloved program. Um, and some of the things I heard over the last couple of weeks were that it's a very popular program and people were concerned about it going away and changing. Um, if we do this, we've got a year runway. So what is the, I don't expect you to have all the details figured out right now, but what is the general plan for communicating what changes would be coming up to the overall population so that we don't get a massive freak out on the first day of school?
So I think, Martina, maybe, and Todd, maybe we can think about this. I think that that's a, that's an interesting question. I think for us right now, we, we've already been having preliminary discussions of what this might look like. So it's not like we're going to start this in about three months. Like, we obviously had to have some discussion before we even brought this forward. You know, that's our, that's our style to make sure that our conducts are aligned before we bring anything before you. So we've already had some preliminary discussion. I think what we'll, and to your point, you know, we'll have the year to work this through. And I think at that point in time, once we have it kind of pulled together, then we can do whatever communication out to the parents so that they can see what it looks like. Um, right now, it wouldn't, it would be too soon to be doing that. Uh, would that be fair to say, Martina?
Yeah, I think first and foremost, we'll, we'll go back and really look at our values as a district and, and what we have in place already and then what we might want to change. And, um, I feel confident that we'll be able to do that within a year effectively. We have a strong base and just, to Kathy's point, bring us up to beyond twenty nineteen so that we can support our students effectively.
The design curriculum that, um, Minuteman uses, Project Leadaway, is, is, um, used in a number of schools, not affiliated with a vocational technical high school.
That's exactly right.
Replicating that is easy.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? All right, we, we are not going to take a vote tonight and the reason for that is that we put this agenda item on the agenda in an abundance of caution to make certain that, um, the vote that was taken in last time, there was seven of us here, three people voted for it and four people abstained. And after talking with, um, the district's legal counsel, um, that vote stays, it's, it stands. So unless someone wants to reverse the vote, and in order to do that, it would have to be someone who voted in the affirmative, my understanding is.
That's correct.
Then, um, we are done, so.
So what does that mean if we're done?
The vote stands as it was last week.
So that we?
That we're going to, we're going to.
Remain with the program.
We are not going to remain with the program. The vote was to.
Authorize the superintendent to send the letter to Minuteman to, um, to, uh, terminate the program.
The program.
No, and that was, that's, that's the interesting part is because there were three people that voted yes and the others abstained, it, it, it stands. So the only way it can be changed now is if somebody from the, the three affirmative votes, and I believe that was Elaine, Steve and Kathy, if one of you has changed, oh, was it you? I'm sorry, Elise, Elise, thank you. Thank you, my apologies for that. If one of you has changed your mind, then you can put out a motion to rescind that vote, then you could take another vote with another motion. Otherwise, the original vote stands.
I would just like to make a comment, okay? Um, at, at Tom meeting in Stone on Monday night, when, uh, Minuteman presented their budget, one of the interesting things that they noted was, or that I thought they noted, was that their school population is fifty percent special education, which I think was interesting. Um, and I remember a couple of months ago when we had the, uh, the Guidance Department here from Nishoba and the question was asked, well, maybe we have some students who really would benefit from a program such as Minuteman has. And the answer was, well, they get plenty of information about that in middle school. Now, if we're doing this and basically taking away the representatives of Minuteman in the middle school, are they still going to get that kind of information from us?
Oh my gosh, yes, because they have, uh, I, I don't know if I'm the best person, you know, I'm just thinking my middle school principals probably would be a better, uh, resource to this, but no, the middle school children have lots of exposure to this and there's lots of opportunity for them to, uh, ex- explore, uh, Minuteman. And is that your question? and there's lots of opportunity for them to, uh, ex- explore, uh, Minuteman. And is that your question?
That's my question.
Yeah.
And that's the outreach coming, that, that part of it.
They have after-school programs that our students participate in.
And we're maintaining our agreement as a.
Right. The district, has nothing to do with the district or the high school. This is just, all we're looking at with this is this one, with the, the three teachers that teach it right now. That's, that's the only program we're looking at. We value our relationship with Minuteman. We don't want that to go away. So, and we support Minuteman. So that's why this is, this feels awkward doing this, but this, this whole relationship feels a little awkward, you know? But we value what they bring to the table. They, they have a great school.
Aren't there tours and presentations?
Absolutely, all of that. They come in here and do presentations. There's lots of access, uh, for our middle school students.
Okay. Are we good? All set? All right, we're going to move on.
Okay.
Um, new business, the.
Thank you.
S3 Academy update.
So we're going to turn that over to Dr. McGuire. He's going to lead us through this.
Yeah, I can, in the words of superintendent, can she tee this up?
Is that a convenient thing?
I know. For the page.
You guys don't get to own that.
No, yeah, that's okay. So as, um, we reported on earlier in the year, um, we, uh, the Nishoba Regional District, particularly our K through eight schools, was the recipient of a DESI grant, uh, the S3 Academy Grant, which stands for Systemic Student Support Academy, um, and, uh, working towards a focus on social emotional learning. Um, this year, uh, the academy included three in-person workshops, um, that was combined, um, not only with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, but the Rennie Center, as well as the Boston College and School of Education Center for Optimized Student Support. We had in-person workshops, uh, in December, February, and April, and we had representation from all of our elementary, uh, and middle schools at all three of these workshops. They also held a number of online webinars for us and offered some tremendous training and resources for all of our schools as we move forward in developing, uh, plans that are specific to each school, but also consistent in their focus as it relates to our district improvement plan. So we've had some real strong success, I think, with that, uh, professional development this year. And Martina Kenyon is here, as well as a variety of administrators from some of our schools. Assistant Principal, um, Scott Blanchard's here, Assistant Principal Christine Neillan from Center School is here, um, as well as Stephen Grant, Assistant Principal at Luther Burbank, to report out on some of the plans that they are developing specific to their schools. So I will turn it over to you folks.
So thanks for the opportunity, um, to speak to you about this. I, as I was kind of thinking about this presentation, um, it occurred to me that this was one of the few opportunities we've had, um, in recent years to collaborate so broadly, um, within the district where every single one of our schools, K to eight, was part of this effort. And, um, that was originally one of the major reasons for applying, um, aside from the obvious expertise that was provided by the three organizations that, um, Dr. McGuire mentioned. Um, but it was, it really was a great experience to be able to, um, work with this group and the two to three other colleagues from within the building who attended each of the sessions, a variety of teachers, um, other support staff, uh, guidance counselors, nurses, um, and it was just great to have so many voices in this, so. Just wanted to give you a little bit of an idea of the, uh, purpose of the academy, uh, in terms of, uh, bringing the research from the Lynch School, um, to, to the group in order to help us really think about how to more effectively support all of our students. So the premise of the work was, um, based on research that this, um, group at Boston College did, um, that, uh, really showed that in order to have truly effective, uh, support for students, uh, the support systems had to, um, com- be comprised of four different components. Customization, comprehensiveness, coordination, and continuity, and I'll talk a little bit more about those in the next slide. So in learning about this, we were given the opportunity to assess our own practices. Um, of course, being the Shova revealing a lot of strengths, but also allowing us to identify areas that we really wanted to grow in. You've already heard mention, um, the social emotional, uh, learning component, which we all have known. That came out strongly again in this work as an area that we wanted to focus on. And we were given the opportunity during those three, uh, days to, together as a group and really plan how we wanted to, uh, consider what we had heard in order to, uh, really bring, bring up the support level in our schools, so. Uh, as far as the major outcomes of the, of the experience, um, the research showed that in order to effectively support students' intervention planning, which I think historically focuses on student needs, really needs to fully consider student, um, strengths as part of the intervention planning in order to make sure that, um, students are growing from something they love and, and, um, using that to kind of connect into areas in which they have to grow further. And while we knew that, I think, as a group, hearing the, um, impact of that on students really resonated, I think, with all of us as far as, um, as an outcome. Um, again, this process for, uh, being, uh, looking at each student individually, which sounds overwhelming for a reasonably large district, wanting to look at each student on their own in order to make sure that we're doing everything we need to and giving us time to consider how we could actually do that as a district, and I think we have some good ideas which we'll share. Um, this important idea of the balanced focus. So of course, we're here for academics, but, um, on top of that and in support of that, there are these other developmental, developmental domains that are equally important. Social, emotional, health, and family domains, and ensuring that in considering interventions in all aspects, we're looking at students holistically from all of those areas in order to make sure that we can effectively support them in, in all of those. This idea of looking at each student individually led us to, um, recognize that we needed a tool to help us do that. That's almost an impossible task without something that can organize that, and we're really excited to have found something that we, um, see as promising. So our group's going to pilot that next year and, um, and we hope that we'll be able to really, um, make some headway with that. And then again, we all acknowledge the importance of the resources that we have, and we're so lucky here to have, um, to have what we have at Nishoba. However, we again came out of this experience, um, thinking, how can we leverage our district-wide resources more effectively? We're a three-town district. How can we work to learn from each other, collaborate even more effectively so that we can reach throughout the district in order to support every single student in every town? Um, so we're really excited about, um, the outcomes of this work and the conversations that it started. It's by no means finished. Um, really, the end point from this year was actually a start, um, in terms of some of the, the plans that are in place. And we're really, um, happy that we had the opportunity to, um, be able to participate this and get the conversation going in, in more of a strategic way. So, um, I'm so glad that, um, my colleagues, Christine Neillan, Steve Brant, and Scott Blanchard were willing to come and share, um, what they took from S3 and are, um, kind of thinking about within their schools, so.
I'll start since Stuart ordered the slide. Thank you for the opportunity to be here to speak and thank you to Martina and the leadership for bringing this district-wide approach. I think it's really exciting to be involved in. At Center School, our next steps are going to be to add social emotional data to our data team meetings at third grade. So right now, we have data meetings that look at math and literacy data, and we're going to bring two measures of social emotional learning skills into those meetings. The two measures are going to be a student self-assessment that students will take during health classes, and then a teacher observation tool, so that we can sit around a table and see each student in each of those domains. Our next steps in that work is to bring in our counselors so they can start vetting tools, creating tools, making sure we're going to get data that will be helpful in moving forward with different levels of intervention. Um, also talking to the classroom teachers and bringing them into the process and the health teachers. So we hope to start looking at tools this year, trial them just with the adults, get some feedback from that group, and then be able to implement it in the fall.
I'll talk a little bit about process, given that I'm in a new role at Luther Burbank with the assistant principalship. One of the things that I've thought a lot about this year is the work that I could do with Scott Blanchard, whose students each year, um, age out of elementary school and then do middle school. So I've spent a lot of time this year with Mrs. Friend and our counselors, working with our sixth-grade community as they acclimate themselves to what it's like to be in middle school. So I had a lot of questions that were slowly answered along the way, and some of them were a little bit late. So I want to spend that time, you know, in the summer and the fall, working with Scott and looking at the work, uh, work off what they've already done. So we can communicate and look at kids' strengths and needs, um, within the sixth grade and work with our teachers to best support them. I think in talking with Mrs. Friend, one of the things we're looking at too, that is another area that I'd like to, uh, to further develop, is that around case management. When you bring kids forward and you look at their strengths and needs, there's a lot of, uh, time and energy that's put into that, particularly when they have diverse needs and you're reaching out to parents and you're setting up behavioral plans and fear plans and different kinds of interventions that let them have levels of success. That takes time, and I'd like us to look at ways to manage that better around case management so we can assign individuals who may know those students well already and just give ourselves the opportunity to, um, allow one person to see cases out to the end so that there can be some success and nothing gets, you know, left to the side because students keep coming forward. Lots of, um, you know, like each read gets busier and busier, so you want to make sure nothing gets left. Um, because, because each one of those cases is a student, at least to be successful and continue to grow. So, um, those are some ideas that I have and I've been thinking about, that I've talked about with Mrs. Friend and with Scott around process and making it a little bit cleaner, a little bit tighter, um, and allowing us to work with kids. Um, because our team in general is very strong. We're, we're covered through all the different domains that Martina mentioned. So we have a great team in place. It's just about taking like next steps that I think that we need to at this point.
Uh, Mayor Volson, um, we started sort of, uh, with a look at our staff process, which is our student assistance team. So typically, the way that process works is, uh, a teacher has a concern about a student. Most of the time, it's academic. Sometimes it's, and more so now than in the past, and continues to grow, is the social and emotional. Um, and so the teacher refers to the staff team, uh, this group, a multidisciplinary, that gets together within the school to discuss, um, what's been done to this point, any potential future, uh, interventions that we could try. Uh, we set goals for that student and then we meet, uh, another six to eight weeks later to talk about how those interventions land. We collect data, we talk about next steps. Um, so we're using that framework to build out to become more comprehensive, it, both in terms of the number of students, uh, that we talk about and also, um, the number of domains that we're touching when we do it. Not just the academic and social emotional, but also the, uh, the family and the health. So to that end, um, there's a, the core group that comes with me to the S3 meetings, it's myself, a third-grade teacher, a speech pathologist, and one of our adjustment counselors. And, uh, we've been meeting, uh, every other Wednesday since our last S3 meeting. Um, and we met this morning, and we have, uh, tasks in front of us. Uh, so far, what we've done is we've been able to pull all the available resources that we could find, um, for outside, um, outside supports, uh, to be able to connect families with. We've also, uh, put together a, uh, a form so that when students are brought to the staff process, uh, we, uh, automatically generate, uh, the parent gets a phone call and we generate a parent survey that goes home so we can get more of that family input, so that when we're talking about the student, um, we're not missing anything that the home might be able to provide. Um, and then a summary sheet to follow that goes home to the parents afterward to say, this is what we met. This is what we met. These are the things we discussed, these are the goals we set, and this is when we're meeting next, so that they can be more involved in the process. Um, from there, looking in the next year, we're looking at things like, how do we expand this work into common planning time with teachers? Or the, um, mornings of our half-day professional development days, um, or staff meetings? Um, just different ways we can get time, um, to be able to do some of this, uh, more comprehensive work.
Great. Thank you. I, I just want to say a shout-out to all of you, and I know the large team that's involved with this, and it's just, it's fabulous to watch the work that you're doing. I love that the assistant principals are taking the key role in this, and, and I thank you for your leadership. Uh, Martina, as always, thank you for yours as well. Todd, did you want to do a round?
Yeah, um, just, this is ongoing work. So, you know, as this has been a year-long, um, grant, and now we have the opportunity to really kind of implement it and, and see it come to fruition. Um, it's really neat to see it tied to not only our district improvement plan, but as you can tell, there is a, you know, a specific plan that ties to each climate at each school, um, because they all have the license in doing some of their own things. So it's been really cool to see this district team come together. It's a very large group of us when we go to this, um, and it's all hands on deck. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Josh. Yeah, does anybody have any quick, quick, quick questions? No?
Just a quick one.
Yeah, go ahead.
First, a, a comment. I don't think that a program like this can really be overstated. I think it's incredibly important for the welding of, of kids. One thing that we always ask our kids is almost a broad survey is, do you have a, an adult in the building that you can go to, that you can trust? So I wonder if you've ever considered turning that around and soliciting feedback from the kids to inform those parents that, um, this is the principal grants the program. Uh, and I'm, I'm not directing it specifically towards you, but just in general for the program.
Yeah, I think it's a, an excellent point, and, uh, one of the great things of being at the beginning of this work, we'll continue to meet and learn from one another, and I think, um, considering something like that will be really important in sort of, uh, getting students into this as well.
Okay. Kathy?
Yeah, I, I, I know we place a lot of emphasis when we look at the curriculum on making sure that there's alignment across the curriculum and there's consistency in this. I, we look a lot at literacy and math. And, um, I'm happy to see that we're applying the same standards to social and emotional learning. So thank you for your work. Thanks for your leadership, Todd.
One of the things, if I can just add, that we have at our middle school level is an advisory program, which meets a couple of times each cycle. So to answer your question, there are, um, a small group of students that are connected to an adult in the building. So over time, we've been able to develop and cultivate good relationships with kids. Um, and if one of those meetings gets canceled because of weather, early release, or MCAS, students often will say, you know, we're not meeting today, that they, they, they let you know that, you know, we're not meeting, so that's a good sign, you know, that they are making meaningful connections with us. We're making meaningful connections right back with them, so. Just some informal observations. Yeah, so those are strong connections that we enjoy making with our population.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate your efforts. Thank you. Thanks, Martina.
All right. Um, security, safety, and a grant update.
And we're going to ask Lisa, Bill, and Vicki to come to the table. And do a quick, for the. Yeah, and we're just, oh, are you staying too? Okay.
She's, she's next.
Okay. And we're just, we're going to ask that you kind of quickly move along through this tonight. Thank you. Really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we, um, were, were, we applied into, uh, December, and we were notified, um, a few weeks ago that we were awarded the Comprehensive School Health Services Grant. Um, the goal of the program is to implement a comprehensive interdisciplinary approach to student health in order to address school-based health prevention and promotion programs, as well as support for students with chronic health conditions and to address health disparities and racial inequalities in order to improve student attendance and academic achievement. More importantly, our focus on one of the programs, um, of many that we're trying to accomplish with this grant is a bridge program or reentry program for students returning, um, to academics after an extended absence for reasons of hospitalization, rehabilitation, recovery, um, or concussions to successfully return to learning. Um, a program will work to establish targeted integrated supports for students whose learning has been significantly impeded by serious mental health and/or other medical challenges. Um, in more of a case manager approach, the thought you've just kind of heard from, um, Assistant Assistant Steve, as well to really build those community links, um, and, and addressing a, a reentry back into school in a smoother, more, um, district-wide and smooth process of actually, um, conversing and actually doing discharge at the hospital, choice of where the student may be, in order to integrate that plan in place to make sure that we're following that same plan in school and it's a smoother transition. Uh, we were allotted $8,000. It's a grant for, um, currently for seven years, but it's re, um, you have to reapply every three years to make sure that you're meeting the goals of the expectations of the grant. They require quite a bit, um, of data. They want data at CPH. They want a lot of that. Um, any questions on that grant?
No, but congratulations. That's huge. $8,000 is huge. Thank you.
We have applied. Um, when I say we, um, Chief Nelson Bolton came. When I say "we," Chief Nelson Bolton came in and asked if we wanted to apply for this Collaborative Safer Schools and Communities Initiative Grant, collaboration police, fire and school administrators. And I said, "Sure, why not?" Wow, was I thinking, no, it was Congress. It was, it was a little bit of a challenge through something that is a language that's not of nursing, but we collaborated together with all three towns, so we had cast a poll, fire, police chiefs and administrators, along with all of our town managers to sign off to make sure that we were going to be using the funds appropriately. And basically that we requested funds for public safety linking communication system inclusive of repeaters, linking systems, radios and licensing. We requested 79,380, we were allowed up to 80,000, but we couldn't go over, which provided a full in-building coverage, district-wide communication, public safety interlock. So what that means is that the communication with the school administrators would go directly to police in all three towns, not just with its own town. Very exciting if we get that. We were supposed to find out April 26th. I will say thank you to Rob Frieswick and Pamela Sylvester who helped write it. It was not just me and some outside agencies and as well as fire and police. So it was a big collaborative effort. We have not heard yet, but other schools have not as well that have applied, so it's, they're just delayed in their response. We're hoping that goes through. And then we were, the district was given the Alice Certified Organization, which we had successfully met the requirements of the Alice Training Institute, a certified organization program and an active respond preparedness.
That's really exciting too.
It was exciting. It was a lot of, yeah.
All of this was super exciting. I mean, even if I could just go back for two seconds, even the application of that grant and how everybody came to the table, you know, we just want to thank everybody for their efforts with this. But to receive this and say, "Yes, it's an organization, we are fully served," that's a good feeling for us. That was a lot of work and Lisa, you did just a huge amount of work on this. I just can't thank you enough for your efforts. You just do a great job for us, thank you.
We've heard such amazing stuff from the community on the Alice program. So, I mean, honestly Lisa, how long have you been here? Two years?
No.
Well, not, November will be two years.
Okay, so a year and not, maybe a year and a half, you've done, and it's not just Alice, it's all the structures that you've put in place with the safety measures, working with our community folks. I mean, really thank you so much for what you're doing with the safety measures. Appreciate it.
Excellent, thank you.
Any questions?
A quick question. On the Safer Schools grant that you applied for, the one that hasn't come in yet potentially, there was articles, capital across articles in our town meeting that sounds very similar to this.
And that's because it is. It's because it is, but we don't know if we, I mean, basically what the community should take away from this is that we were still looking and helping and kind of trying to glom onto the application for our grant as well as, it should send a couple of messages. We need this really badly and we're trying to get it whatever way we can. And so if the grant comes through, then that of course is where it would go rather than the other, but we desperately need it. But we couldn't count on the grant. We didn't know whether we could get it or not.
And the grant was a very small window. The grant came out and it was a 30-day. You had 30 days to apply and when it, yeah, it was that type of grant, the school safety system, there's multiple grants that go after that, but it's a collaborative grant. It had to be in collaboration with fire, police and town administrators and schools. So it wasn't just we were applying, it was definitely an effort from all.
Thank you.
Thank you Lisa, thanks for everything.
All right, moving on, the current district improvement plan review.
And we're going to ask Dr. McQuarrie to pick this up with Martina.
Great. Yeah, actually both of them are going to be instrumental in this. So if you recall, our district improvement plan for this year was a one-year district improvement plan for year 2018 and 2019. So Martina and Lisa are here to kind of report out on where we're at in meeting the goals of that plan. We're also very busy working on our new district improvement plan that we're going to be ready to roll out to you folks in June. We wanted to do kind of a check-in on this to give a sense of how much we've gotten done this year, what we've completed this year in the four areas. Goal one being around teaching all students and expanding models and processes for inclusive teaching. The second goal was really around learning environments and the physical, mental, social and emotional wellbeing of all of our students. And I know Lisa's going to report out on a lot of the accomplishments associated with that goal. The third goal around curriculum and instruction and empowering all of our learners, which you know our March 8th Professional Development Day was really focused around. And then our fourth goal around literacy and the work we've done with early literacy and the work we're going to continue to do, transitioning that into our middle and high schools moving forward. So the hope is to review this dip and then you'll see the connections moving forward with our next dip for the next two years. So I'm going to turn it over to Martina and Lisa and they're going to talk specifically about this year's accomplishments.
Great, thanks, Dr. McQuarrie. So thanks again for the opportunity to speak with you. So the way we organized our presentation today was to talk about what we've done this year, but also with an eye to the next district improvement plan and the work of the next couple of years because we always want to make sure that we look at this as ongoing and continuous work and not one initiative after the next. That's really important to us and we understand it's important to the success of anything that we do. So as we already heard, the first goal was to expand models and processes for inclusive teaching. Inclusive teaching being teaching that considers the diverse student population within the room and often having that be very diverse and making sure that we can help every student grow within that. So for this year, the actions that we looked at to support that goal were to continue supporting the implementation of Co-Top Math, both in terms of seeing the teaching teams, all of them in all middle school math, special educator teams, implementing the co-teaching strategies that they learned about in previous PD and also supporting them with ongoing in-building coaching opportunities which will continue this month and into next year. We already heard about the second action in this goal to strengthen the intervention processes. A lot of that was driven by the S3 Academy Grant and we've also done some work this year to look at criteria for students entering into our student assistance team process and making sure those are equitable, I guess, across the district. So we feel very proud of the work that we've done and we're looking forward to continuing that by fully integrating the social, emotional data into our protocols next year.
Yeah, we'll just have to go through all of it quickly and then we'll, if we've got questions. Thanks, Martina.
Okay, so goal two, again, looking at the foster safety and supportive learning environments to go quickly, updated safety plans and procedures district-wide, which we can, we continue to do that, it's always evolving, the protocols will always be evolved, but we did complete, obviously, the Alice Rally reunification and we've had two safety summits, the second one being this evening. We did a reunification with the Last Emergency Response Task Force protocol and we invited the safety committees of each school to attend and literally ran a small drill of reunification. It was a lot of fun. So those processes district-wide continue so they could all take a hands look of what it would look like in their own school and roll that out as we continue that, the next steps. Update health protocols, feel like the evidence-based practices. We've updated asthma, diabetes and medication administration protocols within our health offices. We are finishing up the draft form and we'll be ready by the end of this month to be up on our website. It's practices that we've already do, based, evidence-based and best practices. It's just now in a protocol form so we're, it can be followed by parents and students and staff of why we do things.
Yeah, and so our goal around expanding professional development and social, emotional learning, this year we continued our focus on the mental health first aid training that we've been partnering with some of our high school staff to offer. And in this year, they actually brought that to the community, which I think was very recently and we're really excited to be able to sort of share the information in that training throughout our district. And of course, looking next year, we anticipate broadening our social, emotional, professional development offerings because it will be a district-wide focus next year. And then Lisa, do you want to?
They send social, emotional learning opportunities in the health curriculum. I can thank the health educators in K through 8 that really took the time last year during some of their PD time. They did a peer review of six different curriculums and made decisions after trialing some of those implementations within their own health classes with alignment with a social, emotional curriculum that already exists in the health education from grades three through eight and they made recommendations of the Wise Owl Bullying Stopper for K through two and Wise Owl Drug Safety Kit for K through three, which we'll be implementing next year.
So I'm going to stop you right there for a second if I could. School committee, have you read this document? Have you all gone through it? Okay. So in the interest of time, what I'm going to ask is that you take each of the next couple of goals and just give us the highlights. If however, you folks want more data, you can come to another, I know you don't want to and I don't blame you because you have your own families, but if we could have you come back, because I don't want to rush through this and I want the school committee to have the opportunity to ask the questions. So if we could do just top line on goals three and four and then if you all have more questions, we'll ask you to come back if that's okay.
Okay, great. So goal three was to develop empowering learning experiences. We did this through PD, we had a really successful professional development year, both the full day and the early release and we're receiving a lot of the projects that teachers worked on throughout the year for that. And another highlight was the work of our instructional technology specialists within the teaching and learning department to begin developing some protocols and processes for doing district-wide work with some of our student, student innovative technologies. So we're really excited to see that work in progress as well. And also on the last one, as it turns out, goal four is focused on literacy. It was really focused on K to five literacy this year, continuing that effort. It's going so well, the students are just doing amazing work within this and the teachers as well. They're just, they're growing so much and we're really excited to be actually in discussions with a group who's going to help us extend that professional development to our middle schools in a slightly different form, but we're really excited to see that grow as well. So that's, those are the two highlights there.
Questions?
So just, the next steps, Todd, will just sort of be like a springboard to the new DIP.
It will be, yeah. We wanted to present, you know, where we're at now and I think you will see that social, emotional learning component weave itself through our, all of our goals and that will be a two-year district improvement plan. First year really being focused on staff and the second year implementing it with students.
Super, thank you.
So I just have to say to Lynn, how different. Nice work. Thank you so much. It makes sense, it all hangs together, it's refreshing. Okay, our next agenda item is the school choice in and out.
Mm-hmm, and I'm just going to allude to it, to be honest with you, I'm not going to walk it through because you'd asked me to just pull the numbers together and that's really what you, all you see, so I won't visit or discuss or anything like that, but you can see the school choice of the district, the next page, notice I didn't see the next page, is Bolton. If you turn over the page, Lancaster and then Stowe and then school choice in and where we sit right now. So you just asked if we could pull the data together and that's what we've done, so feel free to take a look at it and maybe reflect on it a bit and then if you've got some questions, feel free to email it to us and we can get the answers back out.
I have a quick one and Pat may know the answer to this. So we know that our school choice in numbers are going down and that was intentional by the school committee.
Right.
And the reason for that was to, because the, at the time, when we first started doing this, the school committee was concerned that the money was being put into the operating budget versus like one-time programs. And we're coming too reliant on it. So it's similar to, different but similar to the E and D issue of trying to get off the hamster wheel. It's like, stop relying on that money. But my question to you is, where are the numbers on the school choice out? Are you seeing those increase over the past several years, decrease?
I'm seeing a little bit of an increase. For next, I believe it's for next year that it's increasing, but it stays, it's wavy, it's up and down. I don't think that it's enough that we could say, "Hey, there's a real edge here, an edge there." To be honest, it was pretty brutal.
So, you know, thank you for sharing this. So I hope you folks take the time this year, now that you probably at a point, we've talked about this before at this table, to try to identify why they're leaving, right? Like why, what could we do? So, and maybe it's, you know, some of it's going to be because they have their own reasons and others may be because there's something they're not seeing, so, but that would be, like, you guys are going to get to do such cool stuff. Anyway, moving on. Thank you, any questions?
And a process question about that, because that was the same thing that I was thinking of, is there a need that we're not meeting? Is there a trend to it? Is there, is there something that we could pull out and say, "Oh, we could address that" or?
Some of it's parents who work in different districts, they take their kids with them, but like, we were told several years ago that that's all of what it is. It's like, that's not all of what it is, because I know kids that choice out.
Right. And that's fine, there's always going to be some of that, but how do we, how do we even find out the answers to those questions? Because once these kids leave our district, we don't have contact with them, correct? Like, how would we get that information? Exit interviews?
Don't we have to account for every child who resides in the town and where they go to school?
Yeah, but this is a number.
The school choice numbers, well, I mean, we don't, we can't solve for this now, but you guys, there is a way to identify who they are. You can't go after them and say, "We want you to come back," but it's like, hey, you know, we're doing this survey, would you consider answering it to the parents?
So in some cases though, to be honest with you, I mean, for example, the private schools, I mean, that's just where, that's where the parents have chosen.
But that's not choice, right?
Well, no, I'm not, but I'm just talking about when you take a look at choice out, like, she's got it all laid here. Elita did a great job, by the way, Elita, thank you so much for pulling all this together. But sometimes it's just as simple as that, that's where the parent, perhaps it's gone to school or that's where the parent would like the child to go because of religious reasons or whatever. So you've got, you've got some of that. When we're looking at homeschooling, for example, a lot of our homeschoolers have been homeschooled for always, like, I mean, we've got someone, for example, I think with seven children, homeschooled every single one of them. That's just, so I'm not so sure that it's as much of what you think it might be as it's just, this is what the parents have chosen to do for reasons totally not related to the school district at all. I'm not saying exit interviews aren't, you know, an option, but the other thing that we find too is a lot of this starts at the very young age, so it's not like they get to grade seven and think that they're going to choice out to wherever. A lot of this starts right at the early.
Most of them we've never had.
Right, a lot of these children we've never seen.
So we couldn't do an exit interview?
Yeah.
But the numbers go up. They start very small in the young grades and then they increase as the, as the grades go up. Ah, yeah, right now I'm just looking at the district overall.
All right. Are we good? Elise?
Very quick question. I think what would be helpful is, because I don't know this answer, is where we, where these numbers compare to other districts that are similar? Because.
You can look that up.
Yeah. Yeah, and I would have to look that up, but seeing this, we can be like, "Oh, we've, you know, 378 children," but it's like, is that way above average? Is that average? Is that below average? You know, and then I think, and to Elaine's point too, it's also important that if there are kids who are leaving because of something that we can affect, then that's important, but it's also helpful to just know where we fit in that, like, this is really concerning or this is pretty much what every district looks like.
So we can take a look at some of that, you know, in terms of what other districts are experiencing in terms of percentages. So that's a good idea to go back after that.
It looks like, because the only ones that really kind of affect us for budget is District Public and Charter, right?
Mm-hmm, yep.
So it, the Charter is after seventh grade. We got one in sixth, that's probably the answer, because that, so they're probably going to Parker, right? And we don't know for sure, but I mean, because of Parker stocks in seventh grade, that makes sense. And I'm just wondering if, have we looked at what they're offering?
No, we haven't, we haven't gone down that road at all.
That's the next great frontier, right? Once the, once the, once the basics are taken care of.
No, and I get that. Well, when you stop looking at, okay, why are they leaving? I mean, you can't do anything about private, but I'm surprised the numbers are so high, honestly. And then vocational tech, that makes sense because it's hands-on, just a different direction. But the charter school, I mean, those are growing. It would be interesting to see. It would be interesting to see what the attractions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Thank you, Brooke. Appreciate that. Kathy, I'm going to turn it over to you in the school committee manual.
Okay. Well, first of all, I can't thank Mike and Elaine enough for the work that they have done on the school committee manual, approaching it with a new set of eyes and great ideas and catching all the typos and edits and asking just absolutely great questions. And so we finished our last meeting of the year last Wednesday and voted to recommend acceptance that the school committee accepted. So what you have in the folder is the recommendations for revisions and this is what we did. You can see the areas listed by page number of the thing and what we did. Did we add anything? Did we edit? And then in the manual itself, any substantial additions are highlighted in different colored inks because remember we had adopted one in November of 2017 and this represents the first major revision. So the appendix, and once this is accepted, I'll work with Alita about adding links and putting things online, but we'll have links to the school committee calendar in school calendar, link to the sample planning calendar, so it's constantly updated. So it's not a sample planning calendar, it will be the planning calendar. A link to the organizational charts. Once the communication protocols are approved, we'll have a link to that. And then the committee, the personnel subcommittee has created an F A Q sheet for members and potentially people interested in being on the school committee. I think many of us came and on blind faith said, yeah, we'll do it. So this hopefully will answer some questions and along with the manual, fill in the gaps. And all of this, when it is accepted, will be online. So it's a manual for school committee members, but it's also a public document. So the things that we've added, we have added and you don't have it in the packet, but it will be provided online. Glossaries and a list of acronyms, a list of departments and their functions, and then the sample planning calendar, or not the, I said add sample planning, it should be add the planning calendar. On the other side, some things that we need to do, we have to review the operating protocols. It hasn't been done in a couple of years and so we will be having a school committee workshop in June and that would be a good opportunity to do that. We have in our manual self-evaluation and we have a policy, B A A, school committee self-evaluation. So there'll be additional discussion about that. And then we, the school committee calendar will include dates of additional meetings. So the workshop, anything we know of, but also we'll add in graduation, anything that we really need to be aware of. So you don't have to toggle between two calendars. It's all right there. This is an ongoing responsibility of the personnel subcommittee and so we will be continuing to seek feedback for future revisions. So if you look at the F A Q, we actually, the P S C generated some of the questions and then M A S C had some F A Q questions, which we added. So the hope was that folks would have taken the time before, right now, to read it and if you had any questions or comments, that we could address them at this time.
I think it looks great. It's evolved. It looks great.
Yeah.
You guys did a nice, nice job.
Thanks.
Yes.
So would the school committee calendar have things such as school choice, which has to happen like every year?
That's the planning calendar. So we're going to have a link to the school committee calendar and then a link to the planning calendar. And so, but the way it's broken out now by month, because I think that's really helpful. And that has evolved too. It's a really useful tool.
So it has all those on there?
Yep.
All right. All good? So you want to ask her, Brooke?
Well, the personnel subcommittee voted to recommend to the school committee that they accept the revised school committee annual. So does somebody else have to move that?
No, somebody, well, somebody needs, you just told us what the subcommittee did. So somebody needs to actually make the motion. I think you have to actually make the motion, so.
I, so if you would, let me help you. If you would like to move that the school committee adopt the revised Shoba Regional School Committee Handbook, then.
As recommended by Personnel Subcommittee.
Fine. So you've moved it? Thank you very much. Who's got a second? Elaine? Any questions? All those in favor? It passes? It's unanimous? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Next up is, okay, superintendent final evaluation. So this is like one of the biggest roles, functions that the school committee has each year and that is to evaluate superintendent. Kathy Codyann, a couple months ago?
April.
April. Conducted a training.
Yep.
To help everyone understand what the rule, what the, what the frameworks are around the evaluation, which is not ours, it's at the state level. And then each of you filled it out, each and sent it to me and I think this is the fourth year I've had the honor of pulling that all together. The evaluation for the superintendent can be asked for by contacting Pat as a records officer. But, and each one of you will see pieces of your comments in the document. So I'm going to read you the executive summary of it, the summit of evaluation. I want you to sit back and pay attention now. It's really important. This is our one opportunity to tell, to give the superintendent candidate feedback and I really think that you guys did a really nice thorough job. The reality is, it was the same flavor. I mean, everybody's comments were pretty much the same. You just found more creative ways to say it. Okay. The challenge strong leaders face in an evaluation cycle is that they're measured against their greatest moments. Superintendent Clenchey has many great moments and as a result, the Shoba rating of proficient defines a strong leader who is fearless in addressing critical needs and compassionate in handling sensitive situations, both at the staff and student family levels. Superintendent Clenchey sets the rating of provision at a very high standard. This has been acknowledged by the school committee along with their understanding and appreciation for the strength she brings, the approach she takes and the successes she's had. She remains the district's strongest advocate and leads with optimism and confidence. She's accessible and knowledgeable in all areas of the district and along with past and current school committees, she's moved Nishoba in a positive direction. Her tenure is now entering a new phase whereby her energies are being focused on bringing the district's standard of achievement to a higher level. Superintendent Clenchey has a strong and open line of communication with the towns, town administrators, facilities departments and local authorities. This speaks to her ability to communicate effectively and with confidence. She's an excellent manager who successfully streamlines processes, manages timelines and organizes information. One of the challenges, I love this comment, so I lifted the whole thing. One of the challenges in evaluating Superintendent Clenchey's performance is that she often excels at activities that are not public facing. She does this behind the scenes work with little to no fanfare, but deserves extensive credit for these efforts. At the same time, she's the face of the district. Superintendent Clenchey has excelled in elevating staff and developing teacher leadership by creating buy-in, ownership and excitement. There's still work to be done. The progress made this year indicates that A, she heard the school committee's concerns last year and B, put plans and people in place to actively respond to the school committee's requests and feedback. The school committee is encouraged by the advances and encouraged to see these processes and structures institutionalized into the district's culture as she and her administrative team grow teacher leaders at Nishoba. There's a discussion on technology and how that has grown, that it was clear there was a lot of thought put into the curriculum and the digital resource decisions that should continue to, going forward and that it was much improved this year. Communication to various communities has improved over the last year. There's an increased awareness of the district's work among community members and interest in watching school committee meetings due to an acknowledgement that there, I hope some of you are hearing your words come through this. Because I worked my self-off on this. There's, and see, you won't get that. There's an increased awareness of the district's work among community members and interest in watching community, school committee meetings due to an acknowledgement that there's more important information and work being shared. Continued attention should be paid to ensuring consistency across the district and across schools. There's a mention about the high school and that there seems to be something going on there and that based on feedback from parents, while the district's been working toward rebuilding parental trust and engagement at the high school, it's a recommendation that this is a focus for next year. Overall, the school committee acknowledges our superintendent's work and is appreciative of her leadership and the advancements of our, that our worthy district has made. I am going to tell you that, I'm going to tell you folks that the field, and as you go to more M A S S, M A S C joint meetings, as you pay more attention, you have more opportunity and you build your knowledge base, I think you will see that the field for really top shelf superintendents is shallow. And, and I think we need to appreciate what we have. The changes, the advancements the district's been able to make over the past three years did not come easily. And it's not one individual. It takes a leader in order to do that, but I want you folks to like step back from it and try to remember what it was like before. Because you are now, with Superintendent Clenchey's leadership, you are now right at that very edge of flying this district. And I know that it takes, it takes a whole community to get us there. I mean, you mentioned the number 17 in the U S News and World Report and that we went from 30 last year to 17. When a group of us went to interview each of the finalists for the superintendent's role, you know what I'm going to say. And there were three finalists, right? Three?
Mm-hmm.
And when we went to visit Superintendent Clenchey at the Department of Secondary and Elementary Education, she went around the room and asked us a question and said, what's your vision for your district? And everybody had their thing, right? And so I always like to go last unless I have some burning issue. And she said, what's yours? And I said, I really believe we have the staff, we have, we have the teachers, we have the staff, we have, parents are so involved, we have the resources, we should be in the top 10 at the state. Like, there's no reason. So in three to five years, I want us to be at the top 10. So I think based on the new rankings that have come out, I mean, you can say, well, Boston Magazine does its own and then there's additional ones, but U S News and World Report is like the biggie, right? We are now in the top 4% of high schools in the state of Massachusetts. And that didn't happen just by happenstance. So thank you for everything that you've done. Thank you for your leadership. You've built an amazing team. We knew that was coming when we hired you. We were told she builds amazing, strong leadership teams. But I think we all need to recognize that this is not, this doesn't just happen. Where we were just happens, but what you've done here is really admirable. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I want to say too, just a leader is only ever as strong as a team that pushes them up. And I have an amazing team, you know, and Alita and I were talking about it this morning and I, you know, I said, I love this district and I love the people that I work with and I'm excited. Every morning when I get out of bed, I'm excited to get in here. And that's, that's not just a job. That's like, that's your career, that's your life, that's where you love to be. And adding Todd this year was hugely helpful because I feel that I can help to propel the district even further, faster right now, because I have a partner that works with me, sees the same vision, sees where we're going. And I look at the folks like Amory and Pat and Alita who've been here, they are the rock solid folks. I've got an amazing team. And then you add the principals to that, that layer, you know, and I was thinking today in our admin meeting that we had earlier today, these principals are so strong. I mean, you're right. I mean, it's, you don't, you don't just get great leaders everywhere. I mean, that admin team is just so strong. So I feel that I'm buoyant because of the group beneath me. However, with that said, I also have been blessed by this, this group sitting around this table. And, you know, and I think too, when I was talking earlier about our A T M, the, our annual town meetings the other night, again, as I drove home that night from Bolton and I thought, how blessed am I that I, I am in a district that values education, that wants their children to do well and that's willing to give the necessary funds. I mean, I understand that we still operate with restrictions. I get all that, but it's not a fight on the floor every single time. Now, I also know that we work really hard collaboratively with our town administrators to make sure that we're all where we should be. I get all that. But I feel that I'm able to move the district where I can because I've got this sitting around this table and the support and the administrative team below me and it, and then you add that to great staff and great kids, life is good. I cannot thank you enough for the opportunity to be the superintendent of this district. It's an amazing district and I feel blessed every single morning. So I thank you very much for that. Appreciate your work.
All set? Okay. Thank you. We're moving into subcommittee reports. There are two and they're both Kathy's, so I'm going to turn it over to you, Kathy.
I think I gave the personnel report. I have an update from CPAC. So first of all, there will be some leadership changes. The CPAC is actually going to move to an interim leadership structure because when it came time to do their elections, there wasn't a lot of interest. So they have been working with Federation for Children with Special Needs and it was on their advice to, to create a, an interim committee. So the Federation for Children with Special Needs offered what they call Apple Training and it's Advanced Parent Professional Leadership in Education. And we, Joan DeAngelis, and I have to give a shout out to Joan. Anybody who works in a school knows that May is a lovely month, but it's crazy busy in a school district, whether you're teaching or an administrator. And she came to one day of the institute on Thursday and had planned to come back on Friday and just events intervened. Let's just put it that way. But it was huge to have her there along with three CPAC members. And at the institute, we were supported by one of the people from the Federation who's going to stay with them and help them develop the committee. They began to develop a vision and an action plan and so there will be some momentum moving forward. So if principals, as they go about their day to day or parents, if you can, you know, chalk it up, there'll be more coming out, but I think this is really going to be a great year, a building year for them and I'm hoping to continue to serve as their liaison. So the other big news is this upcoming workshop. Where did Ann go?
I have a flyer.
She wrote it out. Okay. So if you could pass these items, I was going to scoot it over here, but anyway. And the folks from the item who are listening, it'd be great to get some, for this, to be in the news for folks. There's a lot of information that goes out through the schools. It's a workshop on stressed out students, understand the impact that anxiety on motivation and learning. It'll be at the Center School on May 21st at 7 o'clock.
Can we treat this the same way we treated, maybe go over to those?
What does that mean? Just send it out?
Well, no. I mean, it's great to have it at Ann, but I mean, the.
Oh, no, no. I mean, that's why I'm talking about it now and Joan, I think reminders go out through Joan's office and maybe through the principals too.
That's right.
That they send out.
Yeah.
Yeah. So. Yeah. So, it'll, it'll address the issues of the increasing stress and anxiety in children and teens, and focus on topics like the difference between stress and anxiety, how anxiety functions and connect with attention and executive function, how does it impact motivation, and some strategies parents can use in supporting their children. The CPAC wanted to give a special thank you to Principal Mel Karen for his advocacy of sharing this event broadly, as well as his offer to be present on the evening of the event to help with AV needs and broadcasting, you know? So it's always nice to have somebody who knows how to make the AV work, and we appreciate his time in doing that. I mean, that's it?
That's it? All right. Moving on, correspondence, anything anyone wants to share? Kinda quiet. Consent agenda, unless someone has a concern, we'll assume the meeting minutes of April 24th, 2019, and the warrants of May 10th, 2019 are approved. So the items for next agenda, I'm not gonna go through everything, but you'll have your school committee officer elections. Your officers are your chair, your vice chair, and your secretary. I'm gonna encourage you guys to not be uncomfortable, and come to the table, and present, if you would like one of those roles, why you would like them, have the discussion. I know it feels uncomfortable, but to be honest with you, that's where the discussion should occur, is at the table. Just chat about it, all right? And whoever your secretary is, that's a big job. Oh, by the way, is everybody's minutes up to date on the Subcommittee's?
Yes.
PSCs, yeah.
Awesome.
Everybody is.
For June 5th, CPAC is, will be doing a presentation on June 5th at the school committee meeting.
Okay. And then you're also gonna be voting on your school committee meeting calendar. Because it's on Wednesdays, doesn't mean it has to be on Wednesdays, so have the discussion with, you're gonna have three new people. Have the discussion and see what works for everybody. Nothing's set in stone with that. And then, a digital learning update, the high school presentation, I may come for that. No, I won't. That'll kill me. I'll watch it. Let me get through the first couple meetings. And I think that's it. We have on the agenda that we have an executive session planned for tonight, but we're gonna defer that to an upcoming meeting, so we do, do not need to have that executive session. So in light of that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'm gonna take Kathy's, so moved, and give me a second?
Second.
I'll take Steve's, second. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Raina. Thank you.